Good evening, everyone. We could have a seat. Actually, I say have a seat, but we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so could we stand up?
(laughter)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bush.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Gesse.
Here.
Latander.
Absent.
Leveque.
Here.
Matola.
Here.
Yavis Mathias.
Here.
O'Connell.
Here.
Rogers.
Absent.
Tedford.
Here.
Thank you so much. So, we're going to start tonight with four inductees for our Wall of Honor, our Volunteer Wall of Honor. Tonight, Peter Olson is not going to be here. His family couldn't be here, so they asked us to put it off, which we're going to do. But the four inductees this evening for the Town of Vernon Volunteer Wall of Honor collectively have dedicated more than 190 years of service to the Town of Vernon. That is incredible, incredible. And this is why we have our wall out there. And I keep saying this, once we fill that wall, it's, it's, it, the wall can, you have to do a minimum of 20 years, and that would be 10,000 years if we filled the wall. But when you actually look at the individuals on there, it would not surprise me if we doubled that number. It's just amazing. There's no measuring the impact that these individuals have had on this community, and the following boards, committees, and commissions have benefited from their volunteer time: Planning and Zoning, Youth Services Advisory Board, the Permanent Municipal Building Committee, the School Building Advisory Committee, the Building Code Board of Appeals, the Town of Vernon Hearing Officer, the Vernon Historical Society, the Vernon Education Committee, the Cemetery Commission, the Board of Ethics, Historic Properties Commission, Municipal Historian, Municipal Preservation Board, Building Code Board of Appeals, the Homestead Revitalization Committee, East of the River Tourism Board, and the Town Council. The list of subcommittees and outside organizations is incredibly long and impressive. So, it's my honor to present the four inductees and thank them for their contributions to the Town of Vernon. Tonight, we're going to induct John Leary, Jean Luddy, Robert Hurd, and Artis Abbott. And I'm going to call them up. I'm going to stand up and do it, but I'm going to call them one at a time. As part of this, we have a proclamation, but we also have a unique pin that we made just for the inductees. So, this is a Town of Vernon pin. It is stunning, and I don't even have one of these because I have not, my maritime doesn't count, so I don't hit the 20, because it's a paid position, not a volunteer position. So, after I'm done, if I want, if I want one of these pins, I have to put a few more years in. So, but when, when you get your pin, you'll see how gorgeous it is, and it's, I can't say enough. So, I'm going to start with our first inductee this evening, if I can keep this right, is John Leary. John, you want to come up? So, John began his career as a volunteer in September of 1992, when he was appointed to the Building Code Board of Appeals. John served three years on the board and then moved to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where he served for five additional years. During the '90s, John was also appointed as a member of the Permanent Municipal Building Commission, beginning in 1993, and committees to serve, and the committee, committees to serve today with the term that expires in 2024. So, you're still on that committee?
Yeah.
In May...
Small break in the middle.
Small break.
I'll just be off for a year.
Okay. In May 2005, the Town of Vernon began a school renovation project funded by a referendum. John was appointed to represent the Permanent Municipal Building Commission on the School Building Advisory Board and ultimately selected to be chairman. This appointment lasted for 11 years. Wow. The work of the SBAC brought the Board of Education, Town Council, PMBC, and citizens at large together to guide the $68 million school renovation project to the taxpayers and approved to completion. John is recognized for his strong leadership, open-minded approach, and his ability to bring groups together. He has served in other capacities as our Town of Vernon Hearing Officer, the moderator at our town meetings, and is a justice of the peace for many years. We are proud to add the name of John Leary to the Volunteer Wall of Honor. (applause). Would you like to say anything?
Not really, but I can. It's, it's an honor to be recognized with the group that I am being recognized with. It's just something that, I don't know, I have to blame my parents, I guess.[362.13][362.13](laughter) They, they taught me that this is what you do, and this is what I do. So, there you go. And hopefully, the town's better off. Leave it better than you found it.
That's how I feel. So, this is the Town of Vernon Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to inductee John Leary in recognition of over 20 years of dedicated volunteer service to the residents of and all our many visitors to the Town of Vernon. Signed this 21st day of June 2022. Dan Champagne, Mayor.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.[397.13][397.13](applause).
And you don't want to lose the pin. Our next inductee, oop, wrong page, sorry, is Artis Abbott. Artis, you can come up or you can sit, whichever do you like.
I'm going to represent Artis Abbott.
Artis has been volunteering in the Town of Vernon since January 7th, 1980. For over 20, or 42 years, she has worked in the community to preserve our history and teach our history to those who are willing and interested. Artis is also a longtime member of the Vernon Historical Society. Artis raised her family here in Vernon and served on multiple committees, receiving the ultimate appointment as Town of Vernon Historian on August 2nd, 1988. Graduated high school that year.[467.13][467.13](laughter) And continues to serve in this capacity today. She is a highly respected Vernon resident who during her time as historian has been called upon to give lectures, come before the Town Council on matters of town history, and has written books about our town and our many historic residents. Throughout her volunteer career, she served on the Historic Properties Commission, Zoning Commission, Municipal Preservation Board, serving multiple terms, the Sidewalk Committee, Sidewalk Committee, and the Historic Ecker Property Study Commission. Artis Abbott was also sworn in as a member of the Vernon Town Council on November 16th, 1981, for a two-year term. It is my honor to add the name of Artis Abbott to the Volunteer Wall of Honor tonight.[512.16][512.16](applause).
Okay, so for those of you that don't know me, I'm Edie Abbott, the daughter, and who worked, you know, side by side with my mom on a lot of the projects, and I know, I know a lot of the people in this room, and I just want to say thank you. And I know that she'll be excited when I tell her about it. She's 96. She's home. She's doing good, but this would have been a little bit too much for her tonight.
She deserves every bit of it.
Right.
So, this is, this is her certificate of appreciation, and Town of Vernon Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to inductee S. Artis Abbott in recognition of over 20 years of dedicated volunteer service to the residents of and all our many visitors to the Town of Vernon. Signed this 21st day of June 2022. And this is the beautiful pin.
Pretty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Picture.
Oh, picture. Our next inductee is Robert Hurd.[592.41][592.41](applause).
Up.
Dan, nice to see you.
You too. Bob Hurd, I'm going to say Bob, because Robert's just not going to cut it. Bob Hurd has been a member of the Historical Society Executive Board since 1983, including four years as president. He has created a reputation of preservation of our most treasured real estate. He keeps a watchful eye over the Historic Properties Commission, a board he has been a member of since 1987. The Historic Properties Commission takes great pride in making sure that what is able to be preserved is. Vernon has beautiful historic architecture, and with Bob's experience as an architect, we are lucky to have someone so knowledgeable leading the charge for Vernon. In addition to the Historic Society, Bob Hurd was appointed to multiple terms on municipal, the municipal preservation board. Bob has also served for over 10 years on the Building Code Board of Appeals and continues today to serve on the Homestead Revitalization Committee. In addition to his historic volunteerism, he has also served multiple terms on the Vernon Town Council from 1977 to 1982, and served on multiple subcommittees, serving as chairman for many: the East of the River Tourist and Convention District for six years, and the Ecker Property Study Commission. Bob Hurd also served as chairman of the Republican Town Committee. Board of Trustees is the former Rockville Public Library from 2000, or 1987 to 2018, and the Vernon Community Arts Board of Directors since 2008. You were also a state legislator.
Four years till they kicked me out.
Till they kicked, what years were those?
1987 to, I mean, 1983 to 1987.
83 to 87, in the legislature at all, as well. We are honored to add the name of Robert Hurd to the Volunteer Wall of Honor this evening. Congratulations, Bob. Would you like to say something?[712.51][712.51](applause).
Well, being somewhat a product of the '60s, I bought the idea that you have to be part of the solution, or you're going to be part of the problem. So, here I am. And with, with luck, the solution is, is an improvement, and I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.[737.57][737.57](applause).
And again, we have a certificate, and this Town of Vernon Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to inductee Robert B. Hurd in recognition of over 20 years of dedicated volunteer service to the residents of and all of our many visitors to the Town of Vernon. Signed the 21st day of June 2022. Thank you again, Bob.[763.23][763.23](applause). Bob, these good people. Is Glenn getting Lorraine in the picture, too? Is Hurd in the picture with Mr. Hurd? Yes, come on. Lorraine, come on up.
Come on down.
They want you in the picture.[779.57][779.57](applause).
I know some of these crazies here.
You'll remember us, yes.
I remember all of you. Oh, God. And I want to say thank you.
Thank you for letting us borrow them for all these years.
My pleasure.
Let's borrow a lot of you. Our final, our final inductee of the evening is Jean Luddy.[797.32][797.32](applause). in 1986 and continues that membership today. Jean is just not a member. She is an active participant in teaching us all about our history and how to preserve it. During these 36 years, she has been the director of the museum, produced two video presentations, one on monuments and memorials in the Town of Vernon, and the second on letters sent to Rockville Journal by service personnel during World War II. Jean has done research for the Historic Society Education Committee for the 2018 revised edition of Vernon's Our Town, used in the third grade social studies curriculum. Jean also takes third grade classes on walking tours of historical sites and is an active participant at the Historical Society Archives. Jean's knowledge of the history of our town is incredible. Administration has called on her for a number of historical questions, and she has given us the historical perspective on many issues. Jean is a treasured resource, resource for the, for the many, for many on the history of our town. Jean Luddy also served for many years on the Cemetery Commission and is serving her first term as a member of the Town of Vernon Board of Ethics. Thank you, Jean, for continuing your work in historic preservation, and we are honored to add the name of Jean Luddy to the Volunteer Wall of Honor tonight. Congratulations.[917.32][917.32](applause).
One of the benefits of being a volunteer is the ability, the opportunity to meet and work with a lot of different people in the community, from volunteers at the Historical Society till teachers in the school system and to the kids. It just makes it such a rich experience, and I am very fortunate to have had these wonderful years.[942.00][942.00](applause).
And we thank you for it. There's that pin. Isn't that a nice pin? Very few people have that. Only the people up on the board out there. Bring him up. Bruce, yes, come up, Bruce.
The narrator.[963.13][963.13](laughter).
So, this is Town of Vernon Certificate of Appreciation is hereby presented to inductee Jean Luddy in recognition of over 20 years of dedicated volunteer service to the residents of and all our many visitors to the Town of Vernon. Signed this 21st day of June 2022. She almost doubled the 20 years. And on your way out, you can look at the, the board. It's just outside here. Your names are already up there, and look at the other names, and you'll, you'll recognize a few of them. But we're going to take a five-minute break so that...
We should have a picture of all of them together.
We'll, we'll grab them, and we'll get them all together.
Don't leave.
So, but we're going to take a five-minute break. We have some refreshments outside. If we can just have the inductees come up here, we're going to get a picture all together.[1027.13][1027.13](laughter). We're going to do it, we'll do it up here. I'm going to move the microphone.[1058.13][1058.13](laughter). There's 190 years of volunteer service right here, everybody.[1076.13][1076.13](laughter). If you got cookies, try them. There's 190 years of volunteer service right here, everybody.[1106.63][1106.63](laughter). If you got cookies, try them. Here's some.[1112.13][1112.13](laughter). This one's my favorite.[1114.13][1114.13](laughter). There's one. Here. Yes, we are. 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 Yes, we are.[1318.13]
Hello, I'm sorry, I couldn't take your message. I'm at a council meeting. I thought I'd give you a call.
It was all over.
Okay, I'll see you then and I'll call Craig. Right? We have to get back to the town's business now. I don't know if you can hear in the background.
All days.
We have to get back to the town's business now. I don't know if you can hear in the background. Bye.
First time on the flying sky, a long time. Oh, who's July 1st? Order's going out to Nana's house. Uh, July 12th, dropping off here. I never know where it's getting all that. I'm gonna get back here, everything's gonna be fine.
Alright. Thank you, everyone. That was, uh... Hundred and ninety years, quite amazing. You know? And that didn't include, uh, Mr. Olson, and it would've pushed us well over two hundred. But he will be back. Uh, what do I do with my glasses? Oh, here they are. Alright. Let's move on to, uh, citizens forum. Is there anybody here for citizens forum? Going once? Going twice? Nope. Alright, we're gonna hold executive session till the end. And we're gonna go on to presentations. I got a couple little things and then Marty Sittler's gonna come up. First is July in the Sky. Make sure you mark your calendars for the premier event, uh, for the Town of Vernon, July in the Sky. This year, the event is scheduled for July 12th with a rain date of July 13th. Activities begin at 6:00 PM at both locations, Henry Park and Central Park. The event culminates with fireworks display beginning around nine o'clock. If it rains again, we might jump in there quicker. Anybody that was here last year understands what I mean by that. Uh, National Night Out. This celebration is planned every year on the first Tuesday of August. The event is sponsored by the Vernon Police Department to con... To connect with the community in a positive way. The event begins at 5:00 PM and concludes at 8:00 PM in the Courthouse Plaza parking lot and is totally free. Uh, COVID thanks, before you are on the table is a letter from North Central District Health Department Director, Patrice Sulick, uh, commending and thanking the Town of Vernon for all of their efforts during COVID clinics. Please take a moment to review it. And the summer schedule, as a reminder, June is the last month with two meetings. July, August, and September, we switch to the, our summer schedule. Each of the summer months, we have a meeting on the third Tuesday as listed in the town council's schedule. That way, we have a lot more room for vacations and stuff, because I know a lot of, way back when, a lot of people were away. Alright, Marty? Come on up. Marty's gonna talk to us about the condition of our pool. As many people around the table already know, um, Horowitz Pool is, you know, I think it was put in in fif- fifty-three?
Uh, fifty-two.
Nineteen fifty-two is when that pool was put in. So we're gonna get a little, uh, presentation on what's happening with the pool right now.
There you go. Good evening. I'll give you a brief history of the pool. It was built in fifty-two, as the mayor just said. Um, sometime in the early nineties, and I couldn't find an exact date, but a renovation, uh, was carried out on it. The concrete was repaired significantly. I think if, if, uh, the stories are accurate, they pretty much ripped out the concrete and redid it. Um, and then sometime in the early two thousands, two thousand three, um, they had an analysis done at that point. The concrete was already ten to twelve years old. And they didn't, in the nineteen ninety, uh, renovation, they did not do the infrastructure. The building stayed the same, the filtration, the chlorination, the, uh, hot water heater, the oil tank, all stay, everything in the building. All of the mechanicals stayed the same. They repaired the concrete and moved on. Two thousand three to basically two thousand nine, over a six or seven-year period, they had repeated assessments by professional engineers, by town staff. Um, and each time, they were kinda told that the structure was aging. That a, a lot of parts, components of it, were beyond their useful life and, and limping along. That was, the last record I could find was two thousand nine, and then I was hired in sixteen and seventeen. We started talking about the condition. I started watching, my maintenance guys literally put hundreds of pounds of hydraulic cement in the wall to patch the holes. Literally, uh, sizes of, uh, the basketball or larger, chunks of concrete would fall out of the wall every year. We would patch it. We would not sound the wall, test it for stability, because if we did, it would've destroyed. If I went with a hammer and tapped it like you really should be able to, bigger chunks would've fallen, so we didn't do that. We patched it, we band-aided it. Two thousand nineteen, the council and-
Marty, isn't the fact that the water pressure itself actually held the wall together?
Yeah, somebody had commented that, you know, why did we leave the water in? You need the hydrostatic pressure to keep the pressure on the walls to keep them from falling in. Um, so we've done that, but in two thousand nineteen, the council authorized, uh, some money to hire an engineering firm to do another assessment, um, to, to confirm the status, whether it was eligible for a renovation, a, a significant renovation, or if it had to be, uh, completely repaired, uh, replaced. Uh, the engineering firm that we selected, um, from I think eight, uh, eight different proposals, was the premier aquatic facility designers in New England. They do almost every municipal aquatic project, they do, uh, significant renovations, and they do complete rebuilds. They came to the conclusion that Horowitz was, every component was beyond its useful life, and some of them had failed. The hot water heater failed, the oil tank failed, uh, the sanitary sewer line failed, the concrete had failed. Um, pretty much every component had failed. And so from two thousand nineteen, it was really early two thousand twenty when they came to us with their report. Guess what happened in two thousand twenty? Pandemic hit, we couldn't meet with them as often as we wanted to in person. Um, so we started to give them direction. It's okay, now we know we can't do a renovation. Don't bother designing a renovation, let's design for a replacement. Uh, the mayor came to several meetings with the architect. We charged him with giving us a premier aquatic facility. Uh, this town does not have a year-round facility. The cost for, uh, an outdoor pool versus an indoor pool, we figured, let's at least ask for the premium. The Cadillac of deals, and they came back with a proposal for an out, uh, a year-round aquatic facility, twenty million dollars. Uh, the committee, of which the mayor was, you know, involved, we came to the conclusion that twenty million in this economy with the recent hundred million for water pollution control was probably not going to be a sellable item. So we asked them to scale it back. Said, okay, instead of a premier facility, can you give us an indoor facility? They came back at somewhere around ten to twelve million for a basic indoor facility. Again, we said, probably still too rich for our blood, let's reevaluate and get another proposal. An outdoor facility was somewhere around, uh, six to eight million, no, I'm sorry, um, nine to twelve. For an outdoor facility, to demolish that, start from below ground, solve the hydrostatic pressure of all of the groundwater coming down from the tower, and stop that from damaging the structure that's there, do all of that was ten to twelve million. We said, okay, can you do anything cheaper? And they said, well, you can probably get a cheaper outdoor pool without the multiple. Right now, Horowitz has essentially three pools. It's got the diving well, the competitive pool, and then the baby pool. Even though two of them are linked together structurally, it's still three different swimming facilities within one. They said, if you wanna go cheaper than ten to twelve, you're not getting three facilities. That won't meet the needs of the community, in my opinion. So, we looked at, um, one last offer or option, and, um, I'd like to turn it over to the mayor to highlight the discussion of that one.
So we have, uh, everybody needs to understand, when you run a pool, it's a loss for the town, no matter what you charge in. And, uh, by the way, we have to have a discussion on the charges, by the way. I think they're a little too high. We'll talk later. Um...
They're self-sustaining, let me remind you that.
No, they're not.
Well, they're supposed to be self-sustaining.
But there's a loss to, there's, there's a loss with the aquatics, and, uh, given the fact that probably the cheapest pool we could get in there would be a, a very simple, one person, that we'd have running kids and everything, we're talking six, six to eight with the cheapest. That's just the one single pool. Um, what a lot of communities are switching to, and this is something we've been discussing for some time now, is a splash pad. And Marion, you actually said it, what, two months ago? And if you look at the splash pads that are out there, they're huge. And the other part with, with the splash pad, um, they're five months. You can use them May, June, July, August, even in September if it's hot enough. So we started out when we wanted a plant, and they came back and they're, they're, they gave us the smallest one. And, uh, they said, no, we have a pretty large community, let's go, what's the biggest one you guys offer? And they offer a six thousand square foot one, right? A six thousand square foot for just over seven hundred thousand dollars. That's a considerable amount of people on, in there at, at the same time. Again, in order for you to turn the individual items on, I believe it's push button. And, you know, this past May, we had a week, at least one weekend where it was like a hundred degrees out. We could've turned it on. And, you know, I think one of the proposals I wanna bring here to the town council is looking at ARPA monies to pay for something like that. Because it benefits the whole community, we don't have year-round costs. Um, we don't have, um, we don't have to hire lifeguards, because pretty much you can go up there and use it, uh, when, when the water's on. Obviously, we'd shut it off at night because we have residents, uh, right next door. But, you know, this is a, probably a discussion we're gonna bring within the next month or so. Probably, uh, if it's not in July, it'll be August. Um, with a couple designs to look at, but I think that may be one of the, the options as well. Because, you know, we went to referendum, I think it was under Marmer, for a pool. And the pool was turned down. Um, anybody that's been here a long time knows that, and it wasn't just turned down. It was overwhelmingly turned down. You know, they did not wanna spend that amount of money. And this is the type of money that we were talking about, and when you start talking, you know, ten, twelve, twenty million dollars, you're going back out to bond, and Jeff has advised us that we should not be bonding at this time. Uh, basically, we're heading into a, uh, a recession, and, you know, we don't, we shouldn't be borrowing money right now. And that's one of the, uh, but that's one of the options that we'll be talking about. But right now, the, the water in the pool is actually holding the wall up. Okay? It's that pressure we're talking about, but it's just that pressure from the hill that has really done a number on this pool. But this pool's been there since nineteen fifty-two. We got our money's worth and then some out of that pool. Um, nobody was ever put in danger, we always made sure of that. And, uh, you know, we got some good, real good years out of that, but, like I said, a lot of the communities are starting to switch to these large splash pads. And that'll probably be, uh, you know, it'll be on our agenda, probably within the next two months, to discuss it further. Alright, any questions? Marion?
You said six thousand square feet.
Yes.
Does anybody know what Manchester's is? Cause I heard Manchester's is too small.
Ours is bigger than Manchester's, it will be.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah. And that's crowded. And they have one in West Hartford, crowded. I mean, not just crowded, there's a lot of people out of them, they're very popular. Any other questions?
Uh, thank you. It sounds like we've kind of known about this issue for, uh, I mean, ten-plus years. I'm just curious why we haven't been able to set aside some funds like we've been able to for other projects, as I do feel like the history of having a town pool is pretty deep in our community. And I do feel like, while a splash pad is an incredible idea, I'm just concerned that some folks might feel like they're losing instead of gaining.
Okay. Well, and that thought's been out there for ten years, it truly has. We still have a community pool, and we still have our, uh, Valley Falls, and we still have Bolton Lake. Um, so we still have three, so we, uh, three swimming areas, including another pool that we can use, um, and are available to any, you know, our residents.
Mayor, if I can add something?
I would just, uh, like to follow up, though, that our community bodies of water have been closed down in previous years due to bacteria. Uh, pools have chlorine, so we're able to mitigate for that.
So we've never had both bodies of water closed at the same time. Um, when we have an issue, we usually are able to switch to the other, the other, so Bolton Lake or Valley Falls. And we still have community pool, like I said.
One last question, I apologize. Um, again, splash pad sounds like a great idea. Um, it does sound like it might be targeting a younger demographic. I know that you can find, like, older, younger tweens, teens who go to pools. I'm not sure if a splash pad would really kind of fit that population in our community. Is there any?
You, you're talking about the teens or tweens?
Yeah, like, like I remember Henry Park Camp, uh, they would go swimming at Henry Park. Um, we'd be losing out on a camp.
But if you look at the, if you go to one of these splash pads and you look at the age range, it's, it's a pretty big age range there. They're all using it.
That just brings up more of a community concern for parents who have younger kids with, you know, desire to not necessarily have them mixed with teen groups who have known to be
Like I said, we, we-
not the best with their language issues, things of that.
And we still have the three other areas, which two of them have beaches for the families to spread out, and plenty of swimming. And then we do have the lifeguards down at community pool.
Are there bus routes to Valley Falls and Bolton Lake?
There is not.
So I feel like, again, we might be running into some issues as to access-
There is a bus to community pool.
Yeah.
The, the, the bus goes right by.
Yeah, but it's not within walking distance?
Yeah, it is.
From downtown Rockville?
You can hop on the bus here, it'll, the public bus, and it'll take you right down to, uh, probably within, uh, what, three buildings of the, uh...
Perhaps we'll consider funding some, uh, bus route payments for kids to be able to get to that area, cause I know that a lot of folks walk to it from here.
Well, at this point, you know, one of the things we, we do have to keep in mind is the fact that, you know, the pure expense. And we just did a sewer plant, we also have some road bonds that we're paying off. You know, probably within three or four years, we'll have more money available, um, to be able to bond, because some stuff will be coming off the bond list. But, uh, we, we have to be mindful going into a recession, because everybody's hurting right now. And to go out and try and bond, you know, ten to twenty million dollars is gonna hurt every taxpayer in this town. And we, we have to keep in mind, everything's more expensive. And in fact, diesel's going up on July 1st because of another new tax, and that's gonna, uh, raise the cost of every product in every store and everything that you go to buy. And, and so- you go to buy. And, and so that's part of what we're thinking about, too. So there's a lot of issues that we've been, I mean, we've been thinking about this for three years. And trust me, I grew up in that pool. And I know I would have went up to a splash pad and enjoyed that, too. Plus, in May, when it's 100 degrees out, I would have loved to have gone up there and still been able to use it. All right. Anybody else? Brian?
Few questions. Water usage compared a pool to the splash pad?
The same. It's, it's, so the water is, it actually uses
Recirculated.
Recirculates the
What's the lights, the?
It'll use ultraviolet radiation for sanitation. But, so it will use less water than a commercial pool over the course of the season, even if we do the extended season, as the mayor said, we can onboard it in a much shorter period of time than a pool can. So when we had that heat wave in, in May, we could have fired it up, used it. And then, for the last couple of weeks, when it's been 60 degrees, had it not operational, and then turned it back on for the peak season. But it would, because it's recirculated water, it will use significantly less than a pool. And it'll use less chemicals, too, because the newest technology is the ultraviolet sanitation.
Well, that was my second question. Chemicals are, is the only thing ultraviolet? The only chemical you need to
I believe they supplement with some chlorine, but it's, it depends on
The tests.
The design. We're actually probably going to go out for an RFP to get multiple vendors to give us proposals on our specs. And we'll compare the options of which, but the, the cost of operating will be significantly lower than a pool for water, electricity, and chemicals.
So that was another question, electricity, because I know in a pool, you're just circulating the pump, whatever. In that one, you're going to have many pumps, right? Because it's going to shower all over here. So electricity's still going to be cheaper?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Pump to circulate 150,000 to 200,000 gallons is a massive pump that takes a lot of electricity. And you can hear the electricity panel, the breaker panel humming with electricity when that pump kicks on. With these other smaller kicker pumps, I'll call them, are going to be a lot more efficient and use a lot less electricity.
Is it just as simple as putting on a light switch to turn it on?
Yeah, it'll actually be a programmable thing. We'll be able to schedule it to come on at eight in the morning and turn off at eight at night and different days of the week. And we can alter the schedule as, as weather demands. And from what my research has been, it, it will be a huge attraction, extremely popular, but we can definitely regulate it and control it to limit impact to the neighbors around.
And are we planning any changes to the aquatics program? Are we moving that down to Center 375 for the summer? We still going to have aquatics swimming program?
We are. And one of the major advantages to the splash pad is the lack of the need for lifeguards, because I will tell you, at this moment in time, we have eight lifeguards. There's a sheer shortage across the country, and highlighted specifically in Connecticut, there are not enough lifeguards. Throughout the pandemic, there were no training classes. So there's a lack of guards, and we have enough to open one facility a day. So I have an alternating schedule. It's on the Park and Rec website, as well as, I believe, on the town website. We're going to have community pool open four days a week, and New Hocke open three days a week with guards. And as the mayor said, if New Hocke, Middle Bone Lake ever has a bacterial issue, we'll reassign those guards to another facility, either back to community pool, or Valley Falls, or wherever we feel that the need is best.
There's no lifeguards at Valley Falls, then?
Enough for one facility a day.
So even if we had a pool up there, we didn't have enough lifeguards to staff it?
Correct.
We would not be able to open up two pools, even if
At the same time?
Right. So Valley Falls last year was a, basically, no lifeguards there. It's kind of a, you know, and the notices are put up that there's no lifeguard there. And then we use them at New Hocke, and we use them down at community pool. So, you know, with eight lifeguards, even like, like you said, even if the other pool was open, it wouldn't be open every day. And, you know, the state came out looking for lifeguards, and they offered a heck of a lot more money.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Mr. Setler, sorry.
Laura?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've seen several designs of splash pads. And one of the things that I noticed was there were specific things specifically for the younger fare, and a little different ones that are a little bigger and meet the needs of our tweens and, and the kids that, you know, are a little bigger. So are we going to be looking into making sure we have a good variety of play areas on the splash pad to be able to maybe keep the kids a little segregate, yes?
Yes.
So that's what I, that's
We will be doing that. In fact, you know, even the designs that they provide, you can go in and actually pick the, the designs that you want on there as part of the package.
I've seen some really great ones, and they've, they've done a really good job segregating the, the children, and making it beneficial for all the different ages.
If I may, through the mayor, the playgrounds are designed that way. There's a two to five, a five to 12. There is a two to 12, if you want it integrated. Splash pads are the same thing. They, they'll design different sections to isolate age groups and make it age-appropriate. I know, as well as I'm sure all of you do, that kids don't stick to the two to five. The five-year-olds migrate over. And the three-year-olds migrate over, but that's okay. We'll design it and post signage to say, if you want your child to play on the appropriate side, this is where you'll play. And as the mayor said, there are tons of features. And that's what I think that we will do, an RFP, asking multiple vendors to give us proposals. We'll give them guidelines. The mayor and I have talked. We don't want any elevated platforms or any, you know, structures that could potentially increase our liability. We don't want any, the, the large dump buckets like they have at the premier water parks. Those are a cute feature, but they're costly and, and maintenance nightmare. So we're going to design it with, you know, multiple features, multiple sections. And I think it'll be a, you know, a premier attraction, as Horowitz Pool was in its heyday.
Well, I'm very excited about hearing about the different things we'll be seeing. And I think it'll be fabulous for our community.
Mike?
Through you, Mayor.
Again, hold on one second, Mike, sorry. Again, this is just a concept. So we're, we're still trying to hash out all of it. Mike?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, Marty. How you doing?
Good evening.
So this is, as, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had said, this is actually the biggest one that they make, 6,000 square feet?
It's the biggest one that they market. They will make, I could build a million square feet if you want to give me a blank check.
Okay. And it was a cost roughly?
They have, they have standard sizes. When I asked them for a commercial, you know, municipal design, they said 3,000 to 4,000 is standard. I said, we're not standard, we want premium. And they said, okay, we'll give you, you know, 5,000 to 6,000. So when we get it and we get the price, we can, you know, decide if we want to, you want to set the price, we can set the price. If you want to set the scope of the design, we can do that.
So the, the cost factor, you had said something in the range of 80,000 ballpark?
No, no. You missed a zero.
80,000? Oh, I'm sorry. 800,000. I'm sorry.
I'll be missing zeros here.
Sign me up.
Almost like budget time here.
Just over 700,000.
700, okay.
That's, that's basically the idea, but we have not gone up to bid. So that's, that's roughly about what it would cost.
Okay. And we will have several designs to review once this comes forward. So we'll be able to look at them.
Well, I think what we're going to be doing is, is deciding on the size. And then, really, we need the specialists, which is basically those that have been trained at Park and Rec, especially with the playground-type stuff. And once they, they get the age appropriate in the different sections, then it will be brought back to you to look at.
Okay. Yeah, because I was, I mean, you know, I was all for building a pool, because there's nothing like, and I remember having my swimming lessons up there when I was a kid, every Saturday morning. But the cost factor and all that is just way too much. And like, like the mayor said, you don't want to bond either, because interest rates are going up. And it's just a bad time with this recession looking at us. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to the designs and stuff. And I think it's a great idea. I think everybody will enjoy it.
If you look at the, when you want to have an idea of what 6,000 feet is, I mean, it's literally 60 foot by 100 feet, I mean, football field. I mean, you're talking about a big area, you know? And that, that's really the point to be made here. Linda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm curious, beyond electricity and water, what the operational expenses might be?
I mean, compared to taking care of a pool, my maintenance staff has to go in and do seasonal opening and filling and testing. And then at the end of the season, we've got to drain all the lines and winterize and all of that. So with a splash pad, the turnaround time at both ends of the season is much quicker, because it's a lot less mechanical, it's a lot less plumbing. The, the budgetary costs will be the chemicals, the electricity, and the water. My maintenance staff will be trained by the manufacturer to, to take care of it. Are there going to be repairs? There's repairs for everything I own that, or everything you own that I take care of. There's repairs every year. I claim I own a lot, but really, you own it all. But, I mean, the, honestly, you know, if we go with one of the top three firms that build these things, their life expectancy is 20-plus years. So, you know, will there be repairs in less than 20 years? Absolutely. Will there be significant maintenance costs or renovation needed? Not in the rest of my lifetime, but don't tell my kids. I don't expect to be here that long.
So is there any type of contract that these businesses offer?
They provide a warranty. And it depends which firm and which components we get, what the warranty is. But they, they will, and the mayor and I have talked, is it, it's going to be purchased, delivered, installed, all by the manufacturer, because then they own all the liability. And whatever the warranty, that'll be a part of our decision processes. If one offers a five-year unconditional warranty and one offers a 10, obviously, that's going to weigh into our decision of which firm to recommend and which playground to build.
How long are we looking at in terms of, once they start, assuming we go in this direction, once they start to completion?
We can't even give that number, because we haven't done an RFP. We haven't had a vote here. We haven't even decided as a town, that's the direction we're going to go. So as soon as we have all that information out, I, I think, what did they say? I think they gave us a time after everything is done and we sign the contract.
They said six to nine months, and they could, and, and construction may be obstructed by New England winter. So if this moves along, we could potentially have a ribbon cutting in the spring. That's a possibility, but it depends on how long we drag out the process and how long, and I say drag out, but we've got to put together an RFP, get the proposals back, review and bring them back to you, get the funding, get a contract in place. And then, at that point, you know, we'll, at that point, we'll have a delivery date and an opening date anticipated.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Marty, do you know approximately, by, by doing a splash pad or any other proposal, how much you'll save on the maintenance and repair from what you would be doing? How, did you include the cost of how much it would, to fill in the pool and get rid of the old part of the pool?
No, we have not included that. But I think Public Works would be able to do it as long as there's no asbestos or anything.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Marty.
The way I threw that voice, that was good.
So, any other questions?
Second question.
Yep, second time.
Thank you. Was, just curious, in 2000 or the early 90s, do you know how much it costs to renovate the pool?
I don't. I was unable to find any documents, but I had two maintenance guys that have been with the department for over 30 years, and they said that that project took place early in the 90s, and it was not, and then the 2003 engineering analysis said that the major infrastructure was not touched in the renovation, just really the concrete was done.
I'm just curious, because you gave the splash pad a life expectancy of 20-plus years, and the pool would have lasted us, did we use it in 2019?
We used it in 19, yes.
Yeah, so it would have been 67 years that we've been able to use that pool.
Well, but with a major renovation about midway through.
Yeah, so if that was midway through, we still got 30 years, which I estimate is better than 20 years. But I just wanted to clarify on that, if we knew how much it cost for that renovation.
I do not have that record.
No. And there's been a lot of maintenance to that pool over the years, too. We don't, we don't have any, I, I bet if we dug, we could probably find it. But again, there's been a lot of maintenance to that pool in the last 20 years.
And to follow up, would this splash pad be at Henry Park, where the current pool resides?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. As, as I understand it, the, one of the issues with the pool, aside from it being 70 years old, is its current location, because of Henry Park Tower, there are certain waters, I guess, that come down the hill that create, just the force of the hill itself, I presume, causes enormous pressure on a pool, which is dug into the ground and has to hold back, I'm not an engineer,
The ground part.
Hold back the groundwater, hold back the dirt that's sliding down because of gravity and what have you. And over the course of 70 years, that has obviously taken a huge toll on the concrete there, which is why you said we have to have water in there to maintain the pool's integrity, to hold that structure in place, correct?
That's correct.
So the issue with, we could throw good money after bad, essentially, in the common parlance, of if you have a 70-year-old car, you know, I could hold it together with duct tape and repairs and what have you, but it's, it's not really going to be worth it in the long run, because I'm not going to get that many more years of service out of it, right?
That's correct.
Where, and if I want to buy a new car now, in a tough economy, where maybe I'm facing higher gas bills and higher grocery bills and all the other problems I'm having, and if I want to borrow that money, I'm going to be paying higher interest rates, right? So to buy a new car is cost prohibitive. But if I can do the equivalent, and I'll get away from the car metaphor, because I don't really have any that matched the splash pad for that. But if I can replace it with a splash pad, which does not have the same structural problems of being underground, having to hold the earth back from a hill, it may last longer than 25 years. It certainly has less maintenance issues, and it has less chance of collapsing as the pool would.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
So that's what we're looking at. And we're really looking, I think, you know, we're a little far down the field here in terms of talking about what it's going to look like and everything. We, we haven't even decided to do it. But assuming we do, obviously, simple math says that the cost of a splash pad is much less than the lowest price of a new pool, which was in the $10 million range. So for, for the town of Vernon of 30,000 people to incur a $10 million cost, Mr. O'Neill's not here tonight, but that would necessitate a huge rise in the mill rate, or bonds that would have to be paid off at interest rates which are increasing by the day. So I, I think that we're looking in the right direction. I would love to have the money to have pools and all kinds of wonderful amenities. Maybe we can convince Elon Musk to move here to Vernon, but unless and until that happens, we're stuck with the budget that we have and the tax base that we have. And we have to always put first and foremost the costs incurred by the citizens of the town of Vernon. And I think we're looking in the right direction and the thing that makes the most economic sense for Vernon and its, and its citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? No. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
All right. Brian, consent?
Mr. Mayor, motion to move the consent agenda as written.
Seconded by Jim? Or Jim? Seconded by Jim. Are we polling any? No? All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, let's move on to new business number one.
Mr. Mayor, the town council, consistent with the town of Vernon personnel rules and regulations, section 3.7, 3.19, and 5.3B3, hereby authorizes that all non-union, full-time, permanent, part-time, and part-time employees be given a general wage increase of 2% effective July 1, 2022, of note for those employees receiving a market wage adjustment effective on July 1, 2022. The aforementioned GWI is already included in that adjustment.
Second?
Seconded by Marion. And that's, that goes along with what we've been working on with the, the market adjustment. If you get the market adjustment, adjustment, you don't get both. That's what it breaks down to. And this has already been in the budget. And given inflation and stuff, right now, it's about two and a quarter to two and a half coming out of arbitration. Julie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Approximately, how many employees does this affect?
Good question. Diane, do we have the number approximately? Or do we have the number? 120.
And just for clarification, the wage increase is 2%?
Yes.
What was the previous?
1%.
It was 1%. Thank you.
Anybody else? Brian?
Mr. Mayor, number employees 120. Do we know the impact to the budget approximately?
I do not. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're still doing the wage adjustments, so we don't have the total on that right now. So basically, if, if some, we're looking at the non-union right now, and the union has to negotiate this portion of it, and, which we'll be talking later on. But with this right here, this, this, this is for the non-union employees. If they, all of them are, are in this wage study. If the wage study has not been done by July 1 for them, they get this, they're going to get the 2%. If they, when If they, when they get around to doing the wage study to make sure that they're, these jobs are competitive, that, and they do get it, they would get the, the market adjustment later on, but they would not get the 2% on top of that. The 2% would already be baked into the wage, the wage adjustment. And then those that basically are already where they should be in the market adjustment, they just get the 2%.
Okay. And this covers just town employees, not non-union Board of Ed employees?
No, this is just town side.
It's town side. And where are most of the employees working? Like what areas?
They're throughout the entire town. So Town Hall has quite a few, but they're in every department.
Every department? Okay, good. Excellent. All right, well, I'm, knowing that, I'm all for it and supporting it. Thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Unanimous. All right. The next is the new business number two.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council hereby approves the registrar voter's request for a budget amendment to cover the cost of the August 2022 primaries in an amount not to exceed $28,450, as presented.
Who seconded that? Jim sec, Jim sec, Bill seconded it? No, it was Jim. Jim seconded it. Come on now, guys. The breakdown of the numbers should be on your table, guys. There it is. Okay. And that's under... Everybody have the form? Okay. As you know, we're never sure every year if they're going to have a primary. We were kind of sure this year, but, you know, we never tax the taxpayer for a primary in case they don't have it. So any questions? Julie?
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just had one question on the ballot prep. It says that you're mandated by state contract to use this particular vendor. There, there's, I mean, that seems kind of unfair, like you guys don't have the option to bid out to maybe get a more competitive price?
No. Through the mayor, there are only two vendors that can be used for this purpose. And we choose to use this particular vendor, which is the same vendor that provides the memory cards for the tabulators. And unlike other towns that use the second option, they have had to pay to reprint their ballots when they don't work with the memory cards. So we use the same vendor so that if something should go wrong, the vendor has to pay to redo the memory cards and the ballots instead of us.
But you're right. We are mandated. We're required to use...
And no one complains about that and says, like, there should be some...
Nobody's listened to the complaints.
Oh, okay. I just...
It's a 10-year contract.
It's a, it's a mandate.
It's a 10-year contract that you have?
It's the state.
The state has it.
Okay. And then, are you at least happy with their, with their work? Okay. And they honor what they're supposed to do?
Yeah. Yes, they've been very good about that.
And on the food, which I thought was nice, I don't know if we can get, it says that a restaurant is going to deliver it for all that and no additional cost?
Yes.
Okay. Can you say who that restaurant is?
New England Pizza.
That's admirable. That's wonderful.
I was thinking about signing up to work myself for that reason.
We told you we'd send the leftovers.
Well, kudos. That was great, to get them to do it. That's, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and he's actually done that for us for many years now.
Oh, okay. Wonderful.
All right. Anybody else? Brian?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, just a clarification on why we have to have every polling place open and not just do it like we do it at our friend, um, Senator 375?
Through the mayor, it's state statute. We are required to have the primaries at the same locations that we will have the November elections.
Okay. Thank you. Every year we have, for elections, we have computer rentals. And I know I talked one time with Mr. Seegan about, or, or your predecessors there, about why don't we just buy them or use somebody, you know?
I'll answer that.
Use them for a few days and then give them back or whatever it is, because I think after renting them for X amount of years, we could have bought it, right?
You're absolutely right. We, and we did that. We bought them. And then those computers sat for a year, sometimes two years.
That's no...
And we, we literally killed the computers. So we, and a lot of them showed up not working because of that. We tried using some of those computers in other areas in, in between, and it just didn't work. So in the beginning, when I first became mayor, that's what we tried to do, and it wasn't going to work. So here, we rent them. The company that rents them to us takes care of them, gets them prepared, all set for us. We put the materials on there. We use the computers for everything they need, and they need those computers for some time, too. And then after it's done, they go back to the company, and then when we need new computers, we just call them up and we get these new computers. So, yeah, it, it just didn't work when we tried to buy them.
So when you rent them, do they go through our IT guys to make sure the security, et cetera, et cetera? Are they attached?
They start at IT.
They start in IT?
They do the rental, IT.
I know, I noticed that. You said the IT rental.
And we're not, we're also not storing anything on the laptops. There's no programs to be installed. It's a, it's a website that we use, so nothing stored locally as well, so it helps the security.
Right.
So when you, like, there's nothing on a hard drive there, so if you had a problem six weeks down the road, say, you don't really look at the computer, you go to the website, you go to the cloud to see what's going on?
That's, through the mayor, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. That's interesting. The other thing I had a question about always is rental of vehicles?
Yes. So we went to rental of vehicles because of employee injuries. And so we decided to rent them out, so we're not basically lifting all that stuff and putting it onto the trucks, using our employees. Because one injury can basically eat up 10 years' worth of rentals.
All the stuff being...
Tables, chairs, all the count, all the computers and everything they use.
Rather large, like seven-foot tall storage bins that we put all the supplies in.
Those are the security cabinets that we keep the tabulators and everything in.
That's locked.
It's locked and sealed shut, so they weigh between 800 and 1,000 pounds each.
Okay.
That's why.
Good. All right. I was just, you know.
Yep.
Yes, the account is called rental of vehicles, but it's not really a vehicle. It's the whole service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. You just satisfactory answered my questions, and I'm supporting this.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Ariana?
Thank you. Through you. I just wanted to ensure that the advertising included stickers for our folks who enjoy stickers when they vote.
Yes. Yes, we have planned to.
Wonderful. And with this, I was just wanting to confirm, how did the mailouts go for changing of the districts? Have you received any feedback in terms of confusion?
Yeah. No, not really, to be honest. We have not. And we also did our once-a-year cleanup, if you will, of the voter list. And we got several hundred people, because people move out of town, they die, and move within town. So our, our, are you trying to say I'm short?
We got to make sure you're on the recording.
So, well, I, I am short, so what the heck? So we probably have changed 600 or 700 people for different reasons over the last several months, so we are up to date with that. And hopefully, this will be the first election since we have changed. And people going to Skinner Road plus the detour, it's going to be interesting come August.
Be a mess.
So it's a double whammy almost.
Wow. Wow. Thank you.
So the, the detour hopefully will be, it'll definitely be over by November, which is nice. But, you know, I also received the information from you guys about the change in district. It was pretty clear, and you guys did a good job with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Unanimous. Have a good night, guys.
Cheaper than a splash pad.
Thank you. Yes, no splash pad or pool for us. Thank you.
What do we do? Brian, why don't we do the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council waves the reading of the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting on June 7, 2022, Draft 2, and that minutes of said meeting be approved.
Seconded by Mary Ann. Are there any corrections or deletions? No? All right. All those in favor? Unanimous. Unanimous. All right, we're going to go back to executive session, and we're, and Mike Macarroll is not here tonight. So Don Maslik, our Assistant Town Administrator, will be going into the meetings with us.
Mr. Mayor, the Town Council pursuant to the authority given in Connecticut, General Statutes 1-202, hereby moves to go into executive session to discuss personnel and invites Don Maslik, Assistant Town Administrator, to attend.
Seconded by Jim. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous. All right, guys.